March 12, 2020. Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. And on Wednesday, June 16, 2021, by action of the legislature, the order was extended until April 1st, 2022. We have a full agenda today. Uh, under agenda management here at the beginning. Um, our next session is an executive session. Uh, which we're going to take a motion to go into executive session. I'm going to ask a couple of folks to go outside and be comfortable. We'll be as quick as we can and pursuant to the motion. When we're concluded the executive session, we will be coming back to complete the rest of the agenda. So I'm going to ask everyone who's not involved in the local 2417 APSME Council 93 Executive Session to, uh, step out. And John, we're going to ask you to stay.
Oh, yeah, John, I keep to stay.
And, uh, union people can stay, so. John Wallach, uh, John, John Wallace from the school doesn't have to be here, but. And everyone else can go back in the waiting room that doesn't need to be here. Yes, Director.
So I think it's appropriate to enter the motion.
Yes, I intended to ask for.
Chairman, I should finish.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I almost the motion pursuant, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, pursuant to purpose three, uh, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with APSME Council 93, Local 2417, facilities maintenance, specifically a grievance file pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. And pursuant to purpose two, to conduct a collective bargaining session with APSME Council 93, Local 2417, facilities maintenance, specifically a grievance file pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. If the chair declares an opening meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the commissioners. So I said, if the chair rules that, that would be my motion.
I have so declared, so we're going to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
And I want to make clear before I take the vote that we are going to return to finish the regular meeting after this, so stay tuned. Motion going to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. Left out there. I know John Wallace is out there. And we had a woman, we have a woman, did you give her a specific time for Mrs.?
No, I didn't. She's here.
Is she here?
She understands it'll be, I've got one.
Alright.
So that's. Two o'clock.
Alright, why don't we do public comment appointments, all business and personnel and payroll, and then we can get right to John and this woman. Okay, thank you, Leah. Nice to see you. Are we all set, Phil? Okay, we're back in the regular session at the Wednesday, November 17th meeting in Noffa County Commissioners. We're going to, uh, Commissioners go to item number four on your calendar. And we're welcoming everyone, and we're going to do a couple of housekeeping matters and get right to the.
Number 12. Mr. Chairman, I move a postponement of the minutes for approval under item four.
Okay, all the motion, is that made and seconded?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Public comment. Director Cronin, do you have any notice of public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, appointments, we have none. Old business? Director, none?
No, sir.
Okay. Number seven, we have two personnel matters today. One in the treasury and one in facilities maintenance.
How about that? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, uh, through you, notice of appointment of Jill McCarthy of Milton, Mass. As a part-time administrative assistant, uh, for the rate stated, the date to be effective, uh, November 22 of this year.
Second. Motion made and seconded to appoint Jill McCarthy of Milton, Mass. as a part-time administrative assistant in the Treasures Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Done with. Next one is facility maintenance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move, uh, for the facility maintenance, notice of contingent appointment of John Bertrand of Quincy as a temporary custodian, uh, for the rate stated effective November 29.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Notice, it is a vote. Payroll expense warrants for approval.
Mr. Chairman, we have several. Uh, first for the, uh, I'll move, uh, 22 dash 20 payroll of the county, a hundred thirty-six thousand, a hundred five dollars, thirty-four cents. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next one, uh, item 22 dash 20 parentheses 10, uh, payroll of the school in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I, yeah, business manager, watch it carefully, that one. Uh, move for November 16th of this year for the Wallace and recreational facility to credit card payment of $26,000.
That's important.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Two to go. Uh, the expense of the county, November 3rd, uh, of, uh, no, I'm, excuse me, correct that. 11 dash 03 dash 22, expense county, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, eighty-two cents.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
And last one, Mr. Chairman, uh, item 22 dash 05, expense for the school, total amount of two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, six cents. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Um, thank you. Number 10, bid openings at 1:30. I don't believe we have a bid opening today. We just, okay.
Oh, okay.
A no bid openings. Number 11, contract awards today. I, we do not have any.
No, sir. You signed, uh, the contract.
We did last week.
Form that you did last week, but under that note.
Number 12.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could we have Mr. McGowan go at this time where he's been?
Sure.
And then, uh, take.
Alright, if we have no objection, we're going to move to 14. I have no objection.
Can that be alright?
Oh, sure. Number 14 is discussion of Abraham's group recommendations for facility maintenance. This, uh, president with us today is, uh, Superintendent of Maintenance, Yeah. John Owen.
Right.
I make reference to the.
I returned to Zoom.
Abraham's report and also to.
I haven't been on Zoom for a long time.
Well, we're bringing you back, John, so.
Uh, I know all, I know all of yous have my, the bread.
Your letter of November 10.
And, uh, these, these are, uh, some of the things I think we should, you should be.
Thank you.
Enter us, man. I didn't give you all those, did I? Did I give you all of them?
I have one, and then this stapled, right?
Alright, can I, can I just capitalize this and start off?
Yes.
This is the first, this is so new, but it's not so new anymore, but this is an attempt, John, to take the report in, take it in, and we're still in the, in the, in the, we, we've been taking, we've taken it in, we've tried, we're looking at it, looking at it, looking at it. Now we're bringing in the department heads, and I think you're the third. Um, you're not the first, you're not going to be the last, you're one of the key departments to get feedback back and forth. It's not an attempt to make decisions today, it's an attempt to give us as much as we can. I know it's I don't want, I don't think it's controversial, but I, 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 I wish, we're very, we're long into this, and, uh, we've gone from a, a short report to uh, people are going to accuse us of getting involved in, uh, you know, solving the coronavirus source report. That's not the case either. I mean, with this practical application to have another set of eyes look at it, so I don't like to get everyone exercised, uh, yet it is concerning, and I want everyone to be concerned. It's very similar to what we just went through. Very minorly with the union, and it's not an attempt to make any vote change right now, or at any time to. It is, it's made to make us better and more efficient. And it's been a number of years since any of this, if ever attempted, so we're at this level. Let's just open up and chat. And that's what brings us here. So if you want to go over them one by one, you can do it any way you want. And we're just going to probably take it under, take it, just take it in today. It isn't my experience with the other people that have been in that we've, we've had any, we haven't fed back yet. We haven't given our side of the story.
Oh, I don't.
Our, our explanation, but I have a quick, Commissioner Collins has a question. That's all I want, and that's what I was trying to tell you last week when I was talking to you, and, you know.
So John, uh, and I've said this to the other people that have come in, I'll say it to everyone that comes in. The Abraham's Group is a study. You know, and we wanted to look at county as a whole and see if we can make it better, make it more efficient. Maybe a better value, uh, dollar-wise to our constituents, to our cities and towns, if possible. Um, it doesn't mean that the guidance that they've tried to give us, we will act on it. It just means that we're trying to, just looking at it with, with new eyes and with fresh eyes. So I know that there are different issues that you have concerns about. Um, but if there are things that you see in the report that makes sense, um, that's, that's easy. Okay, I can agree on these five things. I have issues with these five things. Uh, that might be helpful. So if there are things that you can agree on that make sense, if you could just talk to, um, uh, John Cronin, that'd be great.
Well, I've gone through this, uh, report, and a lot of it pertains to my department, uh, probably all of it. Uh, that's why I have these items down here. You know, they have a lot of recommendations. That doesn't necessarily mean they're right.
Correct. That's correct.
Everyone.
That's why you're going to have a hard time deciding what's right for you. I mean, I just follow, I'll follow whatever you guys want me to do, but there's a lot of stuff in here that's going to cost. There's not going to, you're not going to make money, you're not going to save money, you're going to lose money. If you read it.
How so?
You're going to lose on our court rentals.
I saw that a couple of times cited in your responses.
If I have my employees down there, you're, you're employees.
Really, you're employees, that's everything.
They're not going to get paid through the court rentals. You can't charge the court. Court pays for the maintenance department. Not the work. Not in the Aggie school.
Okay, so wait, we can put that back out, through you, Mr. Chairman. You're, you're jumping ahead. You're talking about the suggestion of the study to consolidate.
I'm just putting that out there.
I, I, I looked at it, this was a lot of material to read. I'm sure we all spent time going through it, but.
Still going through.
I am too. There's the maintenance department, which you're here presenting. There's the Aggie, which isn't even on the agenda today, which.
But I'm glad John's here.
I'm glad you're here, alright. But hold on, so I looked, I had three things that I was troubled by, and I want to talk to you about. I think you have one on the head, the idea of reimbursement that could be affected, right?
Oh, it was it.
Okay, the idea of, uh, some areas weren't properly perhaps given due, like outside areas that you maintain that weren't counted in.
Well, he based, I don't know where he based his, uh, where he got his information from.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead and ask us that, because we're going to turn around and ask.
I mean, in some places, uh, he looked at, uh, school down in South Carolina, how many square foot a custodian does. My custodians aren't going around square footing. They're, they were outside, they're inside, they're doing work outside, they're doing work inside, like today. There, I have custodians taking care of the buildings. I had to take one from one building, bring them over, and another one from another building, because they had to move furniture out of district court. You're not dealing with square footage, you're dealing with all kinds of issues every day.
No, I, I think he was, our consultant was trying to establish benchmarks. That's all, and they, I don't know where they got it from, and you can, you can argue about benchmarks no matter what you do.
I'm not arguing, I'm just explaining to you what he said. He's saying that each one of my guys is supposed to play an eight thousand square feet a night.
Right, and, and one of your answers, you said though, John, you said, again, through you, Mr. Chairman, you said, they did not include the outside area. That's an important thing. That's where I'm going with that. So if they had included that, that number changes, you understand? Right, you know what I'm saying?
Of course it changes.
I know. So what I would like to ask is, maybe not now, at some further point, as a follow-up, as Commissioner Collins suggests, follow up with that. Tell us the outside areas that have not been, like, I know, for example, last winter when I got on here, you're talking about clearing the sidewalks. You know, for people can get onto the, they get inside the registry, things like that. That's outside the court, right? That's outside the building. Those, I cut in the grass. I want to know more, those are the kind of things you could elaborate on. You know what I'm saying? Just to say he forgot the outside area, that's good, and not being disrespectful, give us a quantity, an amount of something.
All I'm saying to you
Right.
is saying that you can't base it on square footage. Uh, it's totally different. School, maybe. I don't know, you can do hallways and classrooms. But you can't think that a custodian's going to do eight thousand square feet a night or ten thousand square feet a night. You can't do that. They, they run into all different things at night. I mean, they do the basics, emptying trash, vacuuming rugs, buffing floors. They can't, you can't buff floors every night. You don't do that.
Well, I think though, I would say there has to be some.
In a school, you probably do.
Okay.
In a school, you go in a classroom, go, buff the hallways.
Well, all I was, I was saying actually, in terms of, in favor of you, I'm saying, the number might be skewed because they're not including the outside area. So rather than saying you got eight thousand, it might be more like a higher number, because the outside area isn't covered.
Yep, yeah, but.
We have to ask him, did you consider plowing, chelving snow and cutting grass as very minimalized?
That's all, that's what I'm saying with that. The court reimbursement though is a factor, there's no question.
That's a big factor.
That's a big factor. That's, that's a good point.
And number one, I, I believe that, uh, he put down here, I didn't even put them all in there, but he's got all kinds of recommendations and all kinds of information that's wrong. He's saying that, uh, we get paid seventeen dollars a square foot for rentals. We could pay twenty-five dollars a square foot for rentals. Custodians.
Again, that would be something to follow up with.
Of course it is.
As Peter's.
There's a lot of misinformation in this.
It's, it's, this is, this is our first.
And it's something for you guys, you have to look at it very closely.
Okay.
It's a challenge, it's going to be a challenge for you.
John, do you agree that things have changed over the years?
Of course.
It's hard, old habits die hard.
Of course it is.
I mean, you know, people jump to conclusions.
When I first got here, you wouldn't believe what this place looked like. I didn't even wash it with.
Well, John, I don't know if you remember, I hate to date myself, but since Kevin did, I'll date myself. I worked here at the registry of deeds. And the first thing I said when I came back at your Christmas party about five or six years ago, and I said it honestly, that I was happy at the registry of deeds. I was a young man.
Worked for Hannah.
Yeah, yeah, nice guy, and, uh, things look, when I came back in fifteen or sixteen, not that I hadn't made occasional visits here, but came back as a commissioner. The, every building here looks so much better than it did in nineteen seventy, sixty-nine and seventy, when I worked over there, that. It, someone's, it's to the credit of the custodian, that's what I said. Place looks better than I left it. That was not I wasn't kissing anyone's rear end. I meant it.
Yeah, but it, it was a team effort, it was two commissioners.
Whatever, yeah, that's fine.
That authorized the work.
But it, it comes down to the custodian. I do think it's better, but you know, we, we've been coming, not, not from the Abraham's Report, but I, I don't know, it's because John is new and, uh, you know, John has gotten out into the hinterlands, and, I mean, I, I've had some visits. Um, uh, you know, a lot of it started in Quincy, but it did trickle down to other courts, and people say, well, what about this, what about that? And, 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 uh, you know, it makes us wonder a little bit if we got to tighten up, and I mean, you know, but we're willing to talk to everyone and, and do it at the right level and at the right pace, and if it doesn't have to be tied up, we're not going to touch it. But this isn't an attempt to I don't know why anyone should be worried about their job. There's enough people that retire here in a year to take care of everyone.
I'm not worried.
And then it really, I mean it.
About anything.
No, well, you're at the high, you're at the top end of years, et cetera, but, you know, it's not a case of do that, it's a case of another set of eyes to look at it, and I, I don't, I can't say it enough, but, uh, you know. If you talk to ten different groups, you could get ten different opinions too, and I'm not looking to do that.
I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to have this department take care of the Aggie school, but if you're going to hire outside source up there, they have their own bosses. They, they don't need John Vignoni, not night boss up there, who's going to watch this place? Who's going to watch the courts if he's up there?
I'm not as familiar with the schools as I am with here, only because we're here and not there.
Well, we don't, I don't know anything about the school.
Well, I hope you know it's a good place, I mean.
Of course it is. I know that, it's always been.
Well, they have challenges too.
But Peter Murphy does a great job up there.
They got a lot more physical challenges maybe than we do here, but I, I mean, they're, they're deciding, they're saying, take them account. They're not, they're not, they're not taking the vote in the end, we are. But I don't want to, I don't want to.
So you had to, uh,
Be on the soapbox.
You cited that the idea then, if I'm going to get your, not to put words in your mouth, but you'd be, you'd be troubled by implementation of the report based on court reimbursement, loss of revenue, right? Based on the fact that the numbers might be perhaps skewed incorrectly. And also consolidation would be something to be very difficult. Are you with that?
I believe so.
Like the plumber going, like, say a plumber, we hire a plumber, he, he couldn't take care of both facilities, you envision that'd be a difficult thing to do?
No.
Oh.
I didn't say that, no.
I forgot, I read that, okay.
I, I don't believe that he should be up there.
Okay.
Working all day. If something happens up there, he can go up there and take care of it. Something minor, something big, you have to get your outside contract.
So there's an opening, you could have something, maybe perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, something that had to be done right away. I mean, uh, I don't have any, I don't have any problem sending them up there, it's up to them whether they go or not. That's another thing with the union issue.
That's right too. Because what, one's non-union, one's union, right?
Right.
Right, 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 right.
If it doesn't apply, we'll, we'll send them, with all due respect.
Yeah, he'll go if I tell him to go there. And agree with it. That's what you're going to end up with. You're going to end up with a lot more of these.
We can probably draw on our own towns, in our own cities, in terms of what happens. I know in my own, there's a, there's a DPW, which has their own crew, and the schools have their crew, and the school, the plumber, he's in charge of the schools, and the town people have their responsibilities. At times, at times, they work together. Sometimes for, you know, maintaining fields, things like that, they kind of, they overlap a little bit, they're, they help each other out, but the lines are pretty drawn, you know, it's, um, I mean, I, we're trying, like, as the chair has said, we're trying to make our county better. We're trying to make improvements to get into that, you know, next century, um, so we have to be kind of open to some ideas, but you made, you made good points, right, you, you made good points, that's what we're looking for, you know, that's, you know.
There's no, I don't understand how he could pick out, out of everybody picks out the carpenter and the painter to be up there during the day at the Aggie school. Why would you do that? Because, what, what possessed them to pick out the carpenter and the painter? To sit there and wait for John Vignoni to show up?
I, I don't know where it says that.
It says that, that's, you're going to have to, I know, I know you will, go over it.
Well, we have, but I, 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 I mean, we're not done.
I know you're not, and, but you've got a lot of things you're going to have to decide between now and your life.
So the county painter, carpenter, and two Noffa County, and, um, the NCA's maintenance four persons will be assigned as needed by the superintendent of buildings. This assignment would include custodial coverage at the school until contract cleaners come on duty at student lunchtime. They will supervise contract cleaners. This is again envisioning contract cleaning and privatization. This is again, little it down the road, if at all, so, if at all, but, um, that's, by the way, you have to look at it in terms of the total report, and I mean, the report was very broad, had a lot of, you know, ideas.
There's, there's a lot of ideas in there about the maintenance department.
Yeah.
I don't see too many ideas about any other departments.
Point taken.
You know, I.
I, I, I really don't expect you to look at other departments, I don't, and I don't blame you for looking at them wrong, I, I really. How about, yeah, we, we trade places, and we, you know, we have to look at them all, but the, the different rules in different places. But that's what we're talking about, I mean.
Now, I know my guys, they don't know anything about the Aggie school, and you send them up there, you might as well be sending them to a day camp. Now, what are they going to do? They don't know, they don't know the buildings, they don't know anything. If it was me, and it's not me, but I'd make sure I kept, uh, Peter on, up there. Because he's been there for a long time.
We haven't got to the school yet.
Yeah, we're not even there yet, John.
Well, it says in here, eliminate. I don't know, we eliminate him or eliminate me, I don't care which one you do.
Well, again, his suggestions are, uh, talking points, and, well, we're going to talk about. You haven't heard anyone make a vote here, you know. However, as we get closer to the budget, something's going to be done, one way or the other, or maybe nothing will be done.
Well, you, you have a lot to look at and, and to come to a decision. That's for sure. And all I'm doing, I didn't, all I'm doing is mentioning things that could happen.
No, and to be honest and frank, as we should be, you're the first person who's actually given us some pushback on this. I mean, the other ones that we've had have pretty much, I agree, you agree, I mean.
They weren't of the size of his department.
No, that's, that's true.
In defense of that.
But we had, we had a couple of.
And Mark, Mark.
Right, we're kind of, you know.
One man department, hard, not as large as maintenance, and not as key, but they're very important.
And that's good. We wanted, that's what we wanted from our, our, we want information that's going to be, hey, what about.
Well, you asked me, you asked me, I, I wrote that letter to you, which, uh, I didn't think it'd be good to, uh, air this stuff out, a lot of it, and, uh, that's why I wrote you that letter.
Being cautious, we're fine.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll all come to one conclusion or another sooner or later. And we'll do it by June 30th. We'll know, you'll know more when you get everybody's opinion. And, uh, we'll see what happens, right?
Yes. Questions?
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Okay.
No, I'm all set too, I just want you to have an open mind, John.
I do, I, I do, I'm not here arguing with you, I'm trying to, uh,
I mean, I think.
Just give you the information that you don't have.
That's what we want, and we'll go back and ask, and we want to ask them. I've got, I, I gotta get my arms around this reimbursement formula.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I, that, I, that's what I've written across here.
I flagged that the second time.
It's good of you to bring it up, but.
Oh, I know.
I, I don't understand it as well as I could, but I'm gonna.
I would think, Mr. Chairman, if you are splitting someone's responsibility, you can't, you can't submit a bill to the court or to the state, but I can reimburse them.
I would assume, but I mean.
But we'd have to look at that.
I don't know that.
You know.
I think they're almost, John, they're at seventy-eight, right?
Seventy-eight point six percent.
Seventy-eight percent they, you get back.
I see, yeah.
I think, uh, and most of the time, you don't get that back either.
No, but we get, we get within.
We get quite a bit.
Right. I just, I think Phil said we're within, it's very close.
But as far as I, I know, I, I don't believe that they be paying you to have people up, taking care of the school. I just don't, you know, I don't see that happening. Maybe they will, I don't know.
Director.
Uh, I want to thank John for coming in and expressing his opinions on this, just a couple of macro issues for your consideration. As you look at the proposal, you're absolutely right, there's a lot to unpack here. Uh, fundamentally speaking, John's memo calls attention to the total amount that the county currently receives for reimbursement of these personnel that would be affected by the plan. According to his memorandum, um, it would total three hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars in reimbursable wages for five positions. Is that correct?
I think so.
That's the, that would be correct. Under this proposal, a portion of their hours would shift from county-based operations to the agricultural, um, model. Um, we would clearly lose some benefit, as John pointed out, of the reimbursable costs, because they would be uh, not a hundred percent assigned to county buildings, specifically courts. We will have a new payroll system that we're using, um, that's the Tyler product that's coming online, the time and attendance. One of the tools that you would be able to use is to assign each week the number of hours you worked in which specific area. That would allow us to track specifically how much goes back to the court reimbursement, and how much obviously goes in the other direction. In addition to John's proposal, if all five employees were to move away from the county court reimbursement perspective, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would go away as a reimbursement. We don't envision that. This is some kind of a shared model, so some portion would be lost. According to what Mark Abraham's put in his report on page 11 dot 11, the total offset however would be, as John pointed out, a mix of privatization and a trip positions over at the agricultural school. Um, as modeled by Mr. Abraham's, the total cost savings, if you were to adopt his proposal, would be six hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars over a number of years. So despite the fact that you would be theoretically losing money on the court rental slide, you're creating a significant savings on the other side, according to this model.
That's over, that's over years.
On the first year, that is correct. The first year of that.
First year, if you sent five people up there, you'd lose three hundred thousand.
According to.
And one year.
But we wouldn't send them out for the whole time.
According to Mr. Abraham, the first year, it would be a savings of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
All right, I, I don't, I can't fight that out today. You really can't.
No, I, I just wonder, I, I read that, too, and I wondered if he factored in the loss of court reimbursement. I'm not sure if he did do that. I don't know.
I'm not sure.
That's why I think I'd have to look at it. I, I get it, I got, I got savings.
Mark data, whatever, is that his name, Mark?
Yeah.
Get him, ask him that.
Mark Matt, and I don't think you meant the school, I forget the school.
Still would be something to look at, though. I mean, it's just, we have to look at it, that's all. I mean, it's a lot of numbers there.
My job is just to bring it to your attention. You asked me, and that's what I did, and I, I don't.
I mean, where else am I gonna go down?
I hope you don't think that. I'm just putting it out there.
It's refreshing.
I mean, you are our supervisor, I realize it. You know things that we don't know, but I mean, we expect, you know. You, you know, and you have been, and you, to bring it to our attention, otherwise it's hard for us to fathom, but the day-to-day stuff. Of course, we don't want to get it thrown back in our face, but, you know. I mean, how long have we been talking about Quincy District Court leaving?
I've, since I've been here, twenty-something years.
Right.
I've been there about ten years already.
John, it's closer than when you came here, but it's still not tomorrow.
Five or six years away.
But the impact, when it comes, but I can't talk about when it's gonna come, when it's, you know, between now and then, you've been very good at the Band-Aid approach, because we don't spend any big money there. I've said it publicly, because it's throwing good money out the back.
I haven't spent any money down there, big money, right?
Yeah, but when, in the middle of the summer, and you gotta bring that outside cooling top in, and that's, that's all, that's, that's all money. And I know you, you know, you've been very, very excellent at it. If it was a permanent building, we'd, we'd do better, but.
I remember at the meeting, you guys told me, that was years ago, a couple of years ago, you said, don't put any money in, don't pick bucks.
We don't want to send good money out the back.
Thing on the, on the roof is big money.
I know. And I appreciate all you've tried to do, and, and, you know, it's like, we're hoping it doesn't snow this year, but, you know.
No, it's gonna come, but we have a good contract that it's been keeping that thing alive, and, uh.
And that, and we have, those are the things we appreciate.
I know I talked to John about, we're gonna replace, we're gonna take the units, the compressors off and overhaul it. And put them back in before next summer, so.
Was that Stoughton? Oh, Quincy.
Quincy.
Yeah, we were at Stoughton Court yesterday.
I heard you were there.
Good, good update, it's looking, we could start soon, well, the steel's, the steel.
I heard you all down Stoughton, that's good.
Yeah, it's, it's getting there, we're getting there, progress is made. The problem with getting supplies.
The clerk wasn't there, I gotta call him and tell you you're done. She must know it.
Yeah, she was.
The judge knows you were there, so.
It was good.
Yeah.
All right, anything else from maintenance today?
Thanks for your.
Peter.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, if you could put, hey, if, I don't know if there are things in the report that you are okay with, but if, if.
The color of the page you like.
No. The address I was okay with, but other than that, only, only the things that pertain to us.
So, so if there were things in there that, if there were things in the report for the maintenance department that you could agree with? I'm, I'm not saying that you can't, but if, if there are things in there you could agree with, if you could just get a memo to John, so he knows that, okay, these were, these ones you don't have to worry about.
Well, the only one I saw in there that I liked was when he said he was gonna take four guys from the Aggie and send them down here to help us out. That's all I saw on it. You know, it's, it, there's a lot to read in there, but you have to, uh, I mean, the, the suggestions you guys have to make, not me.
John, what do you, go ahead.
Um, to John's part, uh, point there, and, uh, John Walsh in the room also, I just, I think it's appropriate, as you consider this impact, there's obviously a handshake here, as we consider the impact of, um, such a consolidation on John's world, there's the agricultural world. We haven't heard from them. And, you know, it, it takes two to kind of tangle. Are they interested in, in joining this kind of a process, um, because it would definitely impact their services?
Yeah.
Um, so, there's two sides to this coin. This is, today's the first side, you've pointed that out. So as you consider what to do going forward, I think the agricultural's, schools, um, input, which you'll hear, I think, short, two weeks, John?
Two weeks.
Two weeks will be very meaningful as well.
If I could, uh, one last comment, it's important, I think, Mr. Kim, for you. Do we ask Director Cronin to ascertain on the Abraham Report eleven dot eleven that potential saving, which I'm not disputing, but did that factor in the loss of court revenue? So we get a truer number. You wouldn't say, I don't know, I can't find it, there's a lot here, we, you know, I went through, but if that court number is not factored in, then that, there is a savings, but it brings it down to a lower number. And that's all I'd ask.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you, sir. Thank you, John.
I think, I think we have Mark back.
Okay.
He's saying, have you factored the court reimbursement into this?
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's all I'm asking, Mr. Kim, because, I mean, it looks great.
But I didn't.
But if the court reimbursement is, that was a good point that you brought up, that's right there, where I don't, we thought of that, we lose court reimbursement, right? If we factored three hundred thousand against a savings of four hundred thousand, we're still saving, but it's a hundred thousand, and then we have to look at the other things here, you know, so.
Well, in the letter, I, I mentioned, you know, having the men go up there and work here, it's gonna be a budget issue. I mean, it's gonna be a nightmare trying to keep track. John said he's got a heart, something, he's gonna work.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see.
That'll be something we'll look at.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
John, it's nice to see you.
Well, I miss being on camera.
Yeah. Well, we're just getting back.
You see that with all the time.
That's why I get dressed up. I won't see you guys get until June, right?
No, 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 you look well. Take care. Have a good Thanksgiving, John.
You, too.
All right, take care.
Okay. Um, we're gonna move to number twelve now. Um, this is a presentation on addressing substance dependence, addiction, and mental health in Nuffa County. That is a big statement in itself. And, uh, we're gonna welcome Carol here. And we're gonna have Director Cronin, uh, introduce her, and Carol, we'll ask you to come up in the hot seat, and I'm not gonna apologize for you sitting through the, uh, hot's meeting with one of our department heads, but it may give you a good flavor about what county government's done. Which I think a lot of people don't know, but it's been going on for a long time, and we, we're in there pitching, but we wanna say hello. This is Commissioner Collins.
How are you?
Milton, Commissioner Stady from.
Pleasure to meet you.
You, too.
Uh, from the town of Canton, and, uh, again, maybe it was good for you to sit through that, so I'm gonna, uh,
Thank you.
Ask you to open up, and I'm gonna go make a copy of these. One second, and then I'll be right back.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh.
Mike, what's on this screen?
Got it. Joining us this afternoon is Carol Reed, a constituent, uh, resident of Medfield.
Oh, yes.
And also an employee of the town of Needham. Thank you so much. Um, Carol, uh, reached out to the county through me, uh, a few weeks ago, um, with a, um, with an idea or concept for a potential grant award through the ARPA grant that, um, the Commonwealth has received. The, uh, the concept was, uh, dealing with, uh, what is described to be rampant substance abuse, unaddressed substance abuse issues, homelessness, and so forth, uh, across the county. Carol comes with us, to us today, with a background in public health, uh, where she works, as I mentioned, for the town of Needham, the Public Health Division. I've had the pleasure of talking with her a couple of times and collaborating with her over the last month. Um, I think, uh, Carol brings forth some very compassionate, interesting concepts. Um, I will yield to Carol in a moment, but I think one of the things we have to recognize is that what Carol's bringing forth is very much in the beginning phase, uh, of development, and where it goes, a lot depends on the willingness for the commissioners to engage and commit to, and, um, there's a lot of options here, so, um, I, I wanna turn it over to Carol. It's a pleasure to meet her finally, and, um, if it's okay, I'll turn it over to you, Carol. Thank you.
Thank you. So, John captured. I, uh, don't want to be redundant. After our first conversation, he said, I need you to put an overview together. Who are you? What do you do? Where do you come from? I believe he forwarded that to you all.
Yes.
And again, I understand time, so.
That's all right, we're not.
This, he invited me to come, and I said it would be a wonderful opportunity for me to come here and to share what's in my heart and the work I've done. So I want to treat this respectfully, like, if you've read the information that I've shared, I'm happy to answer questions. I also can give you a basic overview of why I reached out to John. Um, it's, it's up to you. And I know time is a consideration. I am, let me just say, I should have said, which my letter said, um, I have lived in Medfield for twenty-nine years. I'm a Medfield Board of Health member. Um, I've worked in Needham for thirteen years. Prior to that, I worked at Norcap in Norwood as an addictions counselor in their evening treatment program. Um, after that work, I went back and got a, a degree, uh, to work as a school guidance counselor, because I loved working with kids. So I have a license in the state to do, uh, guidance in grades five through twelve. And again, uh, years ago, worked in addictions at Norcap, but the combination of being a parent, having my, uh, background and second degree in counseling, and then working in addictions. I took a job in Needham after they had a cluster of suicide young adult and deaths in, in automobiles. Adults due to, um, overpouring in a restaurant, and youth that had been, been, um, under the influence, and that was heartbreaking. So I was hired as a part-time person to do education and outreach to all ages of the community.
John, I just wanted to.
About, uh, substance use, addiction, and to mental health promotion, because as we all know, the stigma of, of addiction or mental health conditions is often a barrier to what, uh, people, uh, take steps to get help. In that time, working part-time in Needham Public Health, those first months, we found a federal grant, we wrote the federal grant, and, uh, I started full-time, so my work for thirteen years really has been funded by the federal government, uh, with a SAMSSA grant, primarily focused on underage substance use. But because of the work and mandates of that in my background, I've always taken calls from adults and tried to help, I collaborate with the police. It was initially a mandate through the grant, but in Needham particularly, we realized that many of us as service providers working in silos, um, to respect people's confidentiality as well as just because of the way our work was set up. So from there, um, I worked with, uh, Lieutenant Baker, and we created the, uh, Community Crisis Intervention Team, which is not a model we invented, but we really worked hard to, to get it together. And in that model, many of you may know of it. It's an intercept model, uh, and all the stakeholders in the community get together. It can be convened by the police because they're not subject to HIPAA. So, um, calls, non-monumental calls can be discussed among service providers, so after about six years ago, uh, Needham applied for a regional grant. The state substance abuse block grant money that comes down to Massachusetts, by federal law, twenty percent has to be spent on prevention, the rest is treatment and recovery, so what, uh, DPH did and the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services is create cluster, uh, prevention initiatives. So Needham has been the lead agency for six years with the public health and police in Dedham, Norwood, and Westwood. We just got a new grant, we are now the lead agency for underage substance use with Walpole, Westwood, and Dedham. So, that's my full-time job. I work funded through, uh, federal dollars that are now passed through on underage substance use prevention, uh, with different stakeholders from four towns. But that work, as I said, translates across all ages, because I might speak in a community, or I might go to their local meetings. How did I get to call John? What I see and what I know is how hard our towns work to stand-up programs to answer issues of mental health support, or homelessness, and we're all reinventing the wheel, like, we may share programs or structures, but in my grant work, when I started going to Washington, people were founded, funded by the county level. And, um, I feel like there's a lot of value in that, because, for example, if Needham has this one federal grant, not the regional, um, so does Navy, so does Wellesley, we're all trying to launch our own programs, neighbors. So I think that's why I felt the state was great when they did these regional things. So what has this taught me? Um, I do programs with my colleagues and police chiefs. Um, we've had educational programs, Bank of Canton, you know, we partner. So in thinking about in the past, it's always been a thought, right? Um, and by the way, I'll say, DA Morrissey has worked really hard over the years to bring us together, those of us who have grants, who have federal funding to mentor the communities across the counties that don't before this regional thing. So when I just worked with Needham in Needham, paid directly by the feds, uh, DA Morrissey asked those of us in Massachusetts to help those other towns stand up and create prevention initiatives, especially during the tough times of the opioid overdose, high numbers. So DA Morrissey has worked really hard to bring us together, and, uh, dedicated drug forfeiture funds to fund prevention, so I was at the first lead person meeting last, this past September, in what, eighteen, nineteen month? And he was there, and I said, DA Morrissey, do you have the ability to shift ARPA funds to homelessness, and then he said.
Don't tell me he said, call the county, I bet he's.
I don't think, and he's a great guy.
Yeah.
And he looks at me and he goes, Carol, you need to call the commissioners, like, who are they?
Thanks, Mike.
Right. So I did a little research, and so I got John, and you can tell, I like to talk, I try to talk fast. My heart is in this work. I work with the police across board towns, and again, colleagues across the county, it's like, what we've been dealing with recently is, for example, a family domestic violence issue, we're trying to get temporary housing. When I try to find homelessness stuff, I go on the different, like, state Bureau of Substance Addiction, uh, portal, all right? You can search and sort for treatment, and you can also do homeless. So I try to continue to put up-to-date resources together and share them with friends, with folks, with our police. But a lot of those homelessness places are closer to the city, and when they're close to the city, uh, that's challenging for us to get people to feel comfortable to go there, as well as to get a placement. The closest ones that we use maybe are Waldham. So this happened, you know, this has been coming up again. I had a family, the mom, uh, was in Needham, and she knew the guy who ran the Seven-Eleven, she used to sleep there at night. So I don't have to, like, I was thinking about today, and I thought, do I give data, do I give? You all know the situation in, that we face in the country, exacerbated by the trauma of the pandemic lockdown. You know, this is documented as a trauma. Even people that aren't struggling with mental health, or mood disorders, or substance have been impacted, and we continue to be, right? Fits all the criteria of the sustained, um, you know, definition. So again, John has been kind to listen to me. I'm like, I have a full-time job, but I also understand municipal funding. I went through the Suffolk Mass Municipal MMA grad program. I get municipal funding, I understand, and I'm seeing ARPA, I'm like, DA Morrissey, do you have any money? Like, let's. I called them. So I said to John, I can certainly come and tell you that what I've seen across the county is we share common issues, problems, and we're trying to almost like put our finger in the dyke. We might not have the need for, say, if we look at homelessness, the same amount of beds Boston needs that night, or, or even Quincy, but I see in my mind, like, is there a way to set up either a voucher program, or a location where we can stand up and have temporary homelessness overnights, and then funnel people out? Instead of what we're doing now is, you know, we're working on the weekend, we're giving our own visa to the Sheridan in Needham, or the one in Dedham. So that's the one thing, and then the other is, the state, as you might know, has set up through the Department of Mental Health, through their emergency services regions, uh, social workers that can access electronic medical records, bed availability. One of the collaborative programs that we do now is with the Dedham Police and the Needham Police, we share and we pay for a DMH-funded social worker. What she is special, she's a consultant because she can see through the hospital records, you know, and get a bed. That's, instead of having them as private staff, we did that model to be able to expedite. So what we found in public health, we would love to have that type of person in a health department, because the amount of mental health issues that we have and trust in nursing, it would be, um, a valuable component. So again, I say, DA Morrissey. So that's how I got to John. He spent a really long time telling me. He spent a really long time telling me, Carol, what's in your heart really isn't the way we operationalize things. I understand the portal. I understand the four. I know all about the Department of the Treasury and the four parameters. So I said to him, do you really want me to come? And he said, no, come. So that's my work, my heart. And and again, I said, sure, I'll come. Um, so and I also just appreciate reading about counties.
And we're in no hurry. And you can come back. But John.
I apologize for stepping out, but um Carol, Carol, I think brings uh 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 an excellent perspective to the work that she does. Um, one of the things that became apparent was the initial call was, can Norfolk County sponsor a program, staff it, pay for it and see the results using ARPA money? And um then the the conversation led to, we don't have the infrastructure. We would have to hire consultants. We'd have to identify the problem and we don't, we're not programmed for that. So we pivoted away from it being specifically a county-run program to perhaps something that could be hosted more locally by one or more communities that could bundle together and pilot or model a program similar to what she's discussed is used at the state level. Um, I've encouraged Carol to talk with Kate Fitzpatrick, your town manager in other communities to see over the next several years if there's a path towards um coming around on a pilot or some program, scalable program that can achieve some of the goals that she's speaking of. I will confirm that the concept of what is is being discussed is a purpose area under ARPA. Um, the question is, how do we get there? And who becomes or what becomes the governmental unit to run the program? Because like every grant, you have to have measurables. You have to, you have to have data that shows here's the definition of the problem and here's the cure that we present and how we'll measure the progress against that. Um, those things, those programmatic goals have to come from the applicant, i.e. the the town and or towns that would be sponsoring it. So that's where we left it. I thought it was, this is one of the first opportunities the commissioners have heard regarding ARPA for community-based impact um to deal with pandemics issues in in Norfolk County. Um, I was quite intrigued by her, not not only her, her commitment to her craft and and her and and obviously her compassion for it, but also the thoughtfulness behind the concept. Certainly if the commissioners see a path forward, I presume it would be more along the lines of a community-based ARPA grant, uh likely in connection with other like communities that can collaborate and and work towards a goal associated with the concept.
On our second call, and again, he's very patient, right, John? I als, as I said, I understand municipal funding and I live in Medfield and I go to town meeting and I'm on the Board of Health. So John said it could be, I'm saying, can you all pay for it with, you know, do you have any money that you've held back? I understand the allotment to towns. And he said, well, I think it would have to be shared. So I said, well, now I'm starting to get in people's business of saying, this would be great, and I know you'd probably want to participate, but chief, I'm not going to name any chiefs that I've talked to, but but then they have to speak to their Board of Selectmen or their town administrator because people have ideas of what they want their ARPA funding to go for.
And now's the time to do it because they're strategizing at that point.
So I'm like, here I am now opening, you know, I'm calling and saying, can you pay for this? Do you want to talk? And he's like, oh, second.
Are they hiding or have they taken the cost?
Oh, this, oh.
No, not John. John.
But no, he's awesome. So another part of this is I do not, you know, mean to uh step in and start to tell people how they're going to spend their ARPA money. And I did, I said that to John too. So I said, if you still want me to come, I'm happy to come and talk about, you know, who I am and what I've seen work on a regional level. He did share with me and I've done some readings since we talked about the way counties um are set up and and all that in Massachusetts and also um which I learned a lot because I participate in Marion Ryan's monthly prevention things. And so I've learned a lot, but um the feasibility, it's it's a big. These two programs I'm talking about, we know work in our setup, but it would definitely be a coordinated, someone who would coordinate and connect people and meet with them and talk to them. When I know the chiefs around here or, you know, the public health directors, they understand and they would participate, but whether or not they'd feel comfortable to ask their town administrator to share the cost. You know, now I'm in a different territory than saying, oh, I spoke to the commissioners and they said they do a pilot for ten and fund it all. Um, that doesn't um step on anybody's toes, right?
Uh, well, this is an enormous new program and it was enormous for us. I mean, counties in Massachusetts are going this way and nationally they're still going that way. I think you figured that out. But we're the oldest, not the first. I don't say we're the first. I think we're the second, but we're still here. And for us to get, how much million do I know on it?
Hundred thirty-seven million.
For us to get, wake up and have them say, here's a hundred thirty-seven million. Now how we're gonna, you're gonna administer it. We didn't say no, but we were taken back. We've hired two, we've hired a team that's in place. I know John explained it to you. All the commissioners know. We've, we have these twenty-eight cities and towns that we know very well between our own knowledge uh past where we came from, come from individually, plus we have an advisory board and we deal with every, someone from every town. The decision was made to pass all of the lion's portion of our money, except some all small administration class, two decisions in town, but for reasons you will understand, they're going to decide, and this isn't a push-off, how to use it. Right away, we heard from Dove. We heard from Father Bill's, we heard just three, Q cap. In this case Quincy Q cap, because A, the three of the groups there are been around a long time. We already had a relationship with Dove, a little financial relationship. Some somewhere Peter's senior man here gave Dove five grand ten years ago or eight years ago.
They're a good group.
Yeah, you know, oh yeah. It's the Quincy chapter, but they come back every year and we, we try to squeeze, give them some money because we feel it's needed. I don't know if you said you work with, you're housed in Needham.
I work in Needham.
But you work with Westwood, Dedham, Needham. If you could convince two or three towns and come up with a model and ask them if they'll all give us, let's come up with a number. We all give me three hundred thousand or four hundred thou, and get three or four towns and 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 put it in. We're at the, we're not at the last, last end and I can't say the check doesn't come from the county. It does. I mean, uh, the door is open. We've taken in, what, three this week or four?
Uh, we're up to four.
We're up to four applications, uh none of this sort, but a lot of it in the public work side, some of it in the police communication side. And if it pe, if it passes the opera test, which we hired a good consultant, we're happy with them. We're not going to hold that money up. We're going to, the legislature is going to sign the check, but we're going to deliver the check.
Four, right?
Correct.
We're at four. Um, and then they, we've got to keep our accounts, counties have to keep track of how much is charged to Quincy, how much charge to Needham, how much charge to Deb. This is a gigantic job. All of your background here um on all of this, these statistics, I'm sure, and I know they're overwhelming. I, uh, you know, I, I personally just had the chief of Quincy Police call. Said, would it, explain this federal money to me again, because you know, I, that's where I come from. I said, well, go see the mayor and then say, call, call up and and you know, he's always out looking for money for these kinds of things and and uh you know, Father Bill's is huge now. I started out with no Father Bills. I worked for the city of Quincy and I knew Father Bill. He exists at Father Bill McCarthy. It's a huge, huge place. And they just opened and and cut the ribbon for a new Father Bills in Quincy. I mean, you can guarantee us, I can guarantee you, it's going to be a portion. Quincy gets the most money just because it's the base. I don't know what the mayor is going to, a lot, but I guarantee you, if it's a properly written application, there will be money for Father Bills in there. Um, that's just an example. Now, they're big now. They weren't at one time. I go back when Father Bill McCarthy went around himself and get, would ask for money for overcoats trickies and now Father Bills is, you know, so I've been through it and it's based, the people they take care of. Undisputable need to be taken care of. But what happens is Quincy became the hub for like Waymouth, Brandy, Milton and and you know, in the house. And everything's housed there. Now they're going to go back to another big commitment. My point is, we said the same thing to, that we're not, we're going to send Dove back through the opera. And it's not to get rid of them. We're not suited to best tell the towns how to spend their money.
Right.
You know more about where the money should go than I, we do. We know in general because what, it happens that while we're all elected, we could be twenty years old. We're not. We all held other positions. We all realize and know what's going on at the, but we never had any until the CARES Act came last year. Directly COVID-related. We paid for a lot of overtime for our workers to wipe down, you know, that kind of stuff. That's already over.
Mm-hmm.
Not nearly hold a candle in size to this, but we, we learned some things from CARES. And when they still owe us some money and it's coming and they liked our application and we're so we're, we're no, but we're certainly got our eyes open, but you have to go back. I'll go down to come back.
I'd like to.
If you could tie it together, it's a giant job. I mean, I don't know, did you, I mean, did you talk to anyone in Needham said, I'm thinking of?
Who I talked to is Chris Coleman. He's the town.
I do know Chris, yes.
He was my boss, you know, in Needham for how many years? So I hadn't had the chance.
To know how they're going to handle, if you went to Needham, say, how are you going to handle your application?
Someone coming in and telling you how to spend your, even though they are my great town.
The town of Milton. I read the Patriot Ledger and I read Milton, those two. The town of Milton actually put a, a thing out, the town manager who is maybe on this call. He listens to our meetings a lot. He's very able. He, he sent out a thing asking people to call in and tell them how to best spend the application. There's a perfect example of what I'm talking about. But again, I'm not trying to pass the buck back off to you and get it off our back. It will end up here, but it won't get here unless it's backed by the town properly put together. However, we're up, you're, you're right in the, you're in the forefront because we're up to four now. It's all right.
And we talked about that too, right? Um, having the time and the capacity to put the application through.
Some of the better are better, not the words, not the word. Bigger towns have grant writers and people who notice. I mean, even the Quincy Police, the ones, a subsection of the city of Quincy has its own grant writer.
Right. So, so when I initially called and, you know, we talked and then our second call, it was like, this is how it's structured. You know, my, my heart was, oh, um, you have these funds. I understand communities now have the portal, but I thought, oh, you have as a group, a lot of funds that maybe you'd be interested or able to fully support one of these programs. So I learned differently.
Half the money is going out before the second half of the program.
Yep, and that's, and but like I said to John, I'm happy to come here and share our work and I must, you know, it's always important to talk about what we do when we collaborate and how we're funded in prevention and how with us, these grants have enabled us, like for example, Dedham, I helped them and they wrote a federal grant. Now they have their own prevention team paid for for ten years. Same with Norwood. They didn't have them, but because the state had done this regional uh funding, um, they joined our group and they were amenable to write a grant. They do have ten years of new staff funded by um SAMSA. So the more we talk and learn about what each other does, I think it's important to also, you know, break down those silos between all varied service providers, especially um our work intersects in a lot of ways. You know, I come from a family that are all business, so I'm more, you know, public health counseling and I learn from them and and they learn from me, but our bottom lines are impacted by people's wellness. So uh I can always get someone's attention in talking about um overall health and wellness for, for employees or families because that, that enters into productivity on the job and absenteeism and so I feel like we all in this tough time, just you having me listening, no matter in your mind. Um, you know, we're out there. There are many like me who work uh across the county with uh prevention grants. I'm fortunate, I am. My fiscal agent is a town, town of Needham, and I'm housed in the health department. So I naturally know a lot because my colleagues are public health. Um, some of the other grantees that have this grant through DPH and BSAS, they may be in a different setting, but most, most are in public health departments in towns. And there's probably, you know, twenty-seven of us encompassing about a hundred and thirty towns now. This new Mass Call Three Grant, again, it's substance abuse block grant dollars that comes down through DPH. And um so I have this grant and I work with these communities and there are many like me, but we partner with public health and boards of health and all sorts of service providers in towns. So I've learned about the Norfolk County Commissioners through John and also reading. And and again, um, that's been positive and and I feel like it's always important to share what we're doing for, for the health and wellness of towns. So that's my thing. And what I heard you say is towns will do this on their own if they're inclined.
Well, yes, but if they have someone as knowledgeable as you or you can pull together two or three towns. If you say, I mean, we'll need them to let you do some footwork in the other towns. Do they have any problem if it benefits them ultimately in the end?
And and I know John said, well, maybe you'd have a town that housed the money. We have a, a town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick. She's been an incredible advocate. I've never heard her turn down any opportunity for us to write a grant. But I did not speak to her about this. Um, so.
Who's our contact person in Needham, John? Is it?
It's Kate.
It's Kate, okay.
Yeah, but, but I do, like I said, I'm a staff person in the health department there. But I tread slowly because again, as I said, I'm a resident of Medfield and I know how people are deciding to spend their ARPA funds. And um I can put out, you know, to, to the folks I partner with and say, this seems like a really favorable idea to the commission. And if you all want to, there's five or six of you that want to partner, you can put an application in. But the question would be, would their leadership approve with us? I know police and public health would approve.
Right. Well, there's a lot of public works money here too. It appears a lot of people are going to use water and sewer and infrastructure money with this. But other people are actually, you know, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't rule it out at all. I wouldn't be discouraged. I mean, it takes a lot, but you mean, if they have someone like you to do it.
Director Cronin, if I could interject. Recently went to meet with the town of Canton a couple of weeks back. And it actually was pretty illuminating for us because uh we met with the town administrator, the town finance director and one member of the Board of Select Board. And he showed us what the town of Canton was doing and I imagine other towns are doing the same thing. They sent out a letter to all the departments, including the Board of Health, historical, recreation. What would you like seed, what would you like on for opera? And now ultimately, yeah, the leaders of the town, the select board have to make those hard decisions. But they also know that, and we should mention this, we're not giving all the towns all the money in year one. We're spreading it out. And so it's going to be a four-year, maybe a five-year program. So it's going to go in waves, you know what I'm saying? And so in the first wave, they may go with, say, a water project because that might be the most pressing. I'm, I'm hypothetically saying that. Or a town might say, you know what, we need something for sewer. But I think in year two or three, those other projects might rise up to the level where, okay, now we can tackle something like that. So tackle what the chair is saying, I think it does go back to the towns. Does make sense to work if you can collaboratively with several towns. We could be a facilitator on that, you know? I mean, we're, our hands are tied to some degree in terms of what we can do with the money. We're tied, but I'm finding out more and more that there's all sorts of ARPA. There's state ARPA, there's federal ARPA.
There's a big story.
There's a big, a lot of money is going out there. So I was, yeah, yeah, a lot of ARPA funds are going out. There might be something to be said, I'm sure, in terms of public health that you could, you could divvy up on, so.
We work extensively, have worked extensively with Rep Garlic. She did a great presentation on behavioral health.
Read today's law.
State ARPA.
The top story is about Speaker Mariano is running again. You get into the meat of the story, you know what he says about third, third of the way down the column? He goes, I've been here for twenty-five years. I've got more money than I can spend. And he puts it right on ARPA.
No, it does. As I said, we, while I was talking about ARPA, I think two months ago, we thought we were ARPA. The county was the ARPA. Now. No, it does. Because as I said, we, while I was talking about opera, I think two months ago, we thought we were opera, the county was the opera. Now the state has something called, they're calling it opera.
He said, I'm a Washington money. That's exactly what he.
So I would say, don't, don't get discouraged.
He may regret it tomorrow when he gets his calls.
And maybe we could be, Mr. Chairman, facilitators.
Well, I certainly.
It promotes regionalization, which is one of our.
Right. I can tell from the calls that others have very similar ideas, you. You know, I mentioned those three dove and cap, the father bills from Ucap. It would be impossible for us to tell every city in town, we'd rather have them tell us that we're gonna okay it and then do the due diligence. There's all sorts of paperwork involved with Uncle Sam, but we're hopeful to get three or four checks out of here before, before Christmas. The form that we've gotten in.
Good presentation.
One is police communications in Dover, you know, and they meet the criteria, they're gonna get their money.
Yep.
Of course, when the first wave came out, we thought everyone's gonna be beating the door down the first week, but you can't get the money without an application. I think some people felt we were just gonna send them. Can't do it. Uncle Sam, and we're gonna do the due diligence.
And it's a lot. Yep, no.
But it's gotta be done. We don't wanna give it back in three or four years, because we won't have a way to raise it to give it back.
Right, right. And we also talk about these funds. They are encumbered by 2024, I think spent by 25, unless that changes. Twenty-six, okay, thank you. You hope that the, that, say, if it's mental health or social work or support, we hope that by then we've proved to the towns that these are viable, important.
On the pecking lot, I guess.
And hopefully the towns will incorporate them into their operating budget.
So we could, you know, as a possibility, if you want, just a suggestion, have you come and perhaps even give a short version of what you might wanna do that, the next advisory board meeting, just to get, because there's a venue where many representatives of, across the county are at one meeting, and just maybe make a presentation there or get information to them. Just, it might be a way of getting, unless you wanna target those four towns you're working with now, depends on how you wanna do it, but I'm just saying, help you out. Facilitate it, just to talk, get the word out.
To John, he knows. I was like, hi, will you fund this? And he's like, I know you understand the poor parameters, but we're not able to just tie into a project. So I said, I'll do, I'm happy, like, I, I I have the commitment in my heart to share information. I have a job full-time. If you want me to come and speak, I'd be happy to. If, and I, if you said, gosh, we thought about this and we wanna see if a few towns will partner on this homelessness thing, I'd be happy to reach out and ask the people I, you know, to get some information. Who would participate? But again, I'll say it, I, I didn't wanna pretend that I was telling towns how to spend their ARPA money.
No, I don't, I didn't take it that way.
Certainly a big issue, obviously.
Right, so I will.
I think it's great to get up to bed.
I, I don't wanna be repetitive, but it's never a waste to share, you know, what we do and, and.
There's no question.
Absolutely.
About it, Brian.
We all intersect somehow and, right? And our, even though we have boundaries geographically, we, our towns interact through people and programs and cousins, and that's why DPH creating these regional substance clusters has been really powerful and positive. We don't just exist in our little boundaries. So thank you. And if you can communicate with me.
Sure.
Let me know. And it was really nice to learn and.
Oh, you put a name with the face is good.
And if I can ever be of any help in the world I have, you have my card.
Yes, I have one more card.
Certainly.
We have the whole file here.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Appreciate it.
As a few. And thank you.
My pleasure, Carol. Nice to see you.
Keep the good work up. You're doing great work.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Happy Thanksgiving. I know, I get that organized. Right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, we're still on a regular session. Yeah, I'm just gonna grab. We're on five, one minute break.
Sounds good.
We've got water right here, near enough. That's probably old water. I'll get you a fresh one at Rick's body.
Bill Buckley is, are we still recording?
We are.
Okay. Just wanted to step outside. Step outside.
One minute recess. At three oh six. Oh, I did, yeah, real quick.
You are now.
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready. I'm just waiting. Waiting to come back.
Yeah.
Amazing time, I should be before going over that for myself. But that's, you know, that's up to you. How you feeling, Joe?
Uh, good, but I got bad news. I gotta go to three days a week. Week after next.
Mr. Chairman, it's still on.
I knew it was coming, but I thought it was like a year. Why don't we, can we pause this for a minute until we start up again? Thirteen on our regular agenda. It's an appointment to the insurance advisory committee. Commissioner's appointment, Director Furman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this matter, the, as I mentioned, I think at a previous meeting, the county has recognized that Chapter Thirty-two, I believe, of Masterful Laws provides for an insurance advisory committee to be formed to address the Public Employees Committee on Healthcare Advice. The IAC, as it will be known, happens to have a position that will be appointed by the commissioners. And in this case, I think you have a request to appoint former county director Francis Haggerty to this role. The IAC will perform a advisory role to the PEC on future healthcare costs, contracts, and other components of that contract.
Let me ask you two questions. One, does, do we appoint someone to the PEC also? Or is it, or is it the county director on our voice on the PEC?
I am the voice on the PEC, and the content of the PEC is part of a memorandum of understanding that was in our lives three years ago and is expiring in June. We'll be negotiating the content slash members upcoming in the next several months.
So on the IAC, is this a new appointment or was there someone?
No, this is a new committee. It'll be a committee of eight. Mr. Haggerty will be your appointee. There'll be appointees from the registry of deeds. Myself, as an appointee to the commissioners, the schools, maintenance and engineering. Be a blend of union and non-union members will be invited to the IAC. And again, they do not, they operate in parallel with the PEC. They advise through deliberations what they would like to see with plan design and things like that.
All right. Commissioners, any thoughts? I have, you know, I'm aware that we're suggesting Frank, I know that Frank spent an inordinate amount of time on employee benefits when he was here. He really does understand it. I think he's a fine choice, but I don't.
The one-year appointment, like annual.
Yes, annual appointment.
That sounds good.
Any questions?
All for it.
Okay, someone make a motion for Frank Haggerty of Avon?
Will the appointment of Mr. Frank Haggerty of Avon to be a representative on the insurance advisory committee?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
One year or whatever it would be.
Yep, to appoint Frank Avery of Avon, Frank Haggerty of Avon as a member of the IAC for one-year term. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We did fourteen for today, fifteen. Report of the American Rescue Act in 2021, Commissioner, the director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, I wanted to notify the commissioners, we have four applications in the queue. I'm gonna give you a brief update on each one, so you understand how close we are to receiving their requests for reimbursement. The first is the town of Dover. Their risk assessment has been performed by Clifton Marsen, their application review, and they need a signed grant agreement from the community before moving into approval phase. Wellesley similarly is in the exact same space. They're looking for a signed grant agreement. Milton has had a risk assessment performed, they're reviewing the application, but we need some more due diligence on, on some items associated with their grant application. And finally, Bellingham is in draft form. It's been communicated back to the community that in order to move forward from draft to submitted, the certifier will have to click a button and move it to final phase. So these particular grants are moving. I would expect them to be close to finalizing by this meeting. By this time next week, the question is whether or not I have enough information to put it on your agenda for approval next week. If it is, we'll move to make our first payments. We have four active.
Any questions? Is it, is it, I have the question to ask you in general, what areas they're in?
I was gonna ask. I believe I.
I mean, is it public works?
It's mainly public works. Dover is a telecommunications tower. Wellesley, I believe, is a water project. Milton is, I can't remember Milton's. And Bellingham, I have not seen.
Okay, we'll have more on that next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixteen, report on COVID-19 response.
Nothing new to report this week, sir.
Okay, that's music to our ears. Number seventeen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items. First, speaking of the PEC, we had our second meeting yesterday. Members of the Mayflower Health Group, featuring Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien, who happens to be the treasurer of the Health Group, appeared before the PEC and gave a demonstration of group benefits, their overall strategies as a health group and what they're trying to achieve. The PEC asked some questions relative to member statistics, overall strategies involving perhaps welcoming other health plans into the group beyond Blue Cross, i.e. the new merger of Tufts and Harvard Medical are provoking, some people not provoking. Our, people are interested to see if that group will be allowed into the blend of offerings in the coming years. So that's, excuse me, Mayflower is getting back to us with some questions. Our next PEC meeting will be on December, I believe it's thirteenth, early December. We're trying to be monthly to move along the development of what our health contract needs will be, as well as simultaneously working towards, as I mentioned, a new PEC agreement for, a three-year agreement for the county of Norfolk. Yesterday, I held our monthly department head meeting. It was well-attended. We went through a host of different issues. Two items I just wanna call your attention to. With Margaret Lee from the registry and attendance and Mr. McGowan, we did discuss the status of the registry building's boiler, which I believe the commissions are aware failed through an inspection back in June. We are waiting for new sections to be shipped, and they keep getting put off. Currently, Mr. McGowan is expecting January, February. Initially, we talked about bringing in a firm to provide alternative heat to complement the remaining boiler operation. But after further discussions with the vendor, it may be likely possible that we can reassemble the underperforming or broken boiler to give us a certain percentage of performance safely. They're going to start working on that in the next couple of weeks to try to reclaim portions of the performance, because they're able to find some baffles in some other areas, their used baffles. The device is not likely to ever achieve maximum performance again, because it does have a damaged section. But they do believe they can give us some amount of heat generation to offset the single use of the remaining boiler. It'll save us nearly fifty thousand dollars if we can achieve that. So we're working through that. But we're monitoring it. And Margaret was saying, you know, they're a small, that building's an old building, it's got hot spots and cold spots. And so we wanna make sure that we heat the building sufficiently, especially as we get into. We're all keeping an eye on it. Everybody's eyes are on this. Stoughton, Commissioner Stady, I defer if you'd like to give an update, but we were both there yesterday for different purposes. I yield to you, sir, if you wanna give a brief update on that.
No, just, I actually, I missed you and Bill Buckley. I don't know how it happened, but I had, I had actually met with John McGowan and Nick Nasty Rockwell was there. We met with Justice Matt O'Malley and the Clerk Magistrate was there and a few other important people. And basically, kinda outlined, what do we wanna do? I mean, in terms of how quick, how soon, how fast can we get this done? The engineer told us that basically they could go forward and put the steel on order, but it could take anywhere from eight to ten weeks before it arrives. So if you look at that, now you're into December and January. You know, and now they could do some prep work, and John explained that. You could begin some prep work. And the problem we asked politely was, do you want this work to take place during the day? Or should be done on the weekends? And truthfully, the judge was very forthcoming and said, I wanna get it done, and it's okay, as long as it doesn't start disrupting other things. He can move his sessions to another location. So it was a very productive discussion, but by the time we finished, it seems to me that because of the darkness of the days coming quicker and the colder weather and the delay in getting the steel, it might be better to just order the steel, get everything ready and go at it, pull home on the spring, and then tackle it then and get it done.
As long as everyone understands that, I don't.
Yeah, and he, he seemed to indicate.
It seems like an old chestnut, but.
Yeah, he said, he said, there's no major problem with ventilation or circulation that they're aware of, things are okay. He said, maybe at this point, maybe if we hold off a little bit and come back in the spring. So I'm gonna leave it up to the experts to figure it out. But I think that's the direction we're trending. It was a good meeting. All parties were on board, and it was good for us to talk it through like we did, so. We'll get there. We'll get there. Just COVID, you know, the pandemic, getting supplies takes a while. I heard that eight to ten weeks to get steel, so amazing.
I understand normal household washer and dryers are impossible to order, so hope your washing goes through with it, because it takes months and months.
Yeah, everything.
To Commissioner Stady's update, vendors were on site as part of a walkthrough. The contract has been rebid. We're looking for a vendor to come in and complete the job of placing the two rooftop units on the roof of the courthouse. So this is part of opening the facility for questions that they may have as they prepare their bids. We expect to have the bids back next week and then award the contract. The minute the contract's awarded, we can begin working on ordering product, i.e. galvanized steel and so forth. And we'll progress as far as we can, we'll try to get the job done without delay.
Yeah.
The, you're right to point out that the conditions at this time don't warrant the rooftop systems. They have adequate heat to get them through the winter. These rooftop units provide cooling during the cooling season, and they're not urgently needed. But nevertheless, we'd like to complete the job because there is a hole on the roof where one of the old rooftop units was located. It's planked right now and tarped, but I'd like to see something a little bit more substantial in place before the winter sets in.
Yeah, John had mentioned that, they were going to address that either way. They would do something to tidy that up, so, but you're right.
Moving on, as we mentioned in your blue papers, we have our third of four vacant positions for custodian filled. Mr. John Bertrand will be starting on November 29th, I believe it's next week, at the Quincy District Court. The holiday schedule you'll see coming up is an updated holiday schedule for 2022. I also want to let you know that I've had two conversations last week with Chairman Joe Reardon regarding the need for scheduling upcoming advisory board meetings throughout the remainder of FY22. Signs are pointing towards a meeting in the middle of December, which I think is pretty traditional. The date is like, is still to be determined by the chairman. He, he knows that I'm waiting for that date because that will dictate how I can pulse the budget schedule for FY23 to begin. So I hope to hear from him soon on that. Finally, the last item, I have a meeting scheduled on Monday with the head of the trial court's facility program in Stoughton to discuss a host of issues, including the status of that project we just discussed, as well as some other matters involving inclement weather notifications and so forth. So I haven't spoken to the trial courts in a couple of months since I was in Quincy. Our next stop is Stoughton, so I'll see you Monday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Number nineteen, emergency items that we did not reasonably anticipate.
Could you just go back to number eighteen?
I'm sorry, number eighteen, holiday calendar, I thought you just alluded to.
So as a separate item, you should have before you're in the packet. If you don't, you happen to circulate this, propose calendar year 2022 holidays. The only thing of note is the, what's known as Juneteenth holiday, this would be observed on June 19th, 2022, I believe. One of the items that we're looking for is ultimately, these pieces have to be brought into collective bargaining agreements. Please note this is slightly typographical, or next to the dates, they're showing it's 2021, but that should be 2022.
So we have to bargain that?
It is a bargainable issue because the, many of the counties' holidays are within the collective bargaining agreements. So we'll be talking about that in the coming months.
What day was that again, I'm sorry?
It's known as Juneteenth.
Oh, June 19th, okay. I can't imagine it won't be accepted, but.
Right, the Commonwealth accepted it and.
The better, the better the plan for it than not for it.
We just wanted to note that for the beginning, okay? If I could get a vote, that would be great, we'll move forward with these conditions for proposed calendar year 2022.
I don't see any reason why not.
We will make adjustments to that typo.
This is the following holidays and dates, 2022. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, excluding Juneteenth, which we have to bargain. So if I could have a motion, I don't see any reason why we can't adopt them, unfortunately.
And we observe that.
We want to notify everyone. Motion made and seconded to adopt a holiday calendar for the holidays dates for the whole year of 2021, all in favor?
2022.
2022, all in favor?
Aye.
There's a little memo to back it up from Michelle, that don't be here, so we're in good shape. Okay. Number nineteen, emergency topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed.
I have one item for you, Mr. Chairman, and it would be appreciated if a vote could be associated with this when we've been contacted by the United States Small Business Administration. Upcoming following Thanksgiving, there's a Small Business Saturday program. They've laid out a proposal to decree that small businesses within jurisdictions, including Norfolk County, should be emphasized and encouraged for shoppers to make use of this local opportunity on November 27th, 2021. But may I kind of hand this to the clerk for consideration of a vote?
You mean the commissioner?
Commissioner clerk. Commissioner, are you not the clerk?
Am I the?
No, I think the, I'm sorry, without all due respect.
I gave you the title.
I believe the county clerk is clerk, the commissioner, but I had. We want our notices.
Someone has to do it.
Thanks, sorry about that.
Well, he's low man, that's.
So whilst the government of Norfolk County, Massachusetts celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, our 31.7 million small businesses in the U.S. represent 99.7% of the firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And where small businesses employ 47% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small business in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do, business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of the Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. Whereas 56% of the shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of the consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. Whereas Norfolk County, Massachusetts supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and reserve communities. Whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the county, across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Norfolk County to hereby proclaim November 27th as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and our county and the communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. That is quite the proclamation.
I want to know who did all those statistics, I want to hire the guy, that's very good. That is, that is voluminous. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of encouraging everyone to shop locally in their small businesses?
Small Business Saturday.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a good way to close, that's excellent. Do we have anything else?
No, sir.
I think a motion was adjourned at 3:27 PM.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll have a full meeting next week. We wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week.
No, no ARPA group coming, no, no group coming here for.